Here is the Tower of Peace in Montabur, Madhuban, India, where the gentleman you're going to learn a lot about tonight, if you don't know about him already. That's the only place he ever communicated with us directly. I'll explain more about that. But if you're wondering, how many of you know who these people are on the wall here, these pictures? Could you just raise your hand? I won't call on you, I promise. Okay, so the gentleman we're honoring tonight left his body on January 18th, 1969. And this is, pronounced his name wrong, let me, Dada Lakraj. That's good. And we call him affectionately Brahma Baba. And he's actually the reason we're all here. And this wonderful woman, we called Mama. And she helped form and educate the Brahmakumari's, which is, I think, the first organization ever, tell me if I'm wrong, someone on the planet to be really intended to be run by women. To be run by women. But back to Brahma Baba. The topic for tonight is to experience inner light. And that's what I experienced when I came to know about Brahma Baba. I had been a seeker of truth and a seeker of God all my life. Dabbled in many different things. And then I went to Peace Village, which is our retreat up in the Catskill Mountains. And I learned emphatically that I was not a body with a soul. I've said this many times. I was a soul with a body. And the body changes. But the soul stays forever. There's safety in that. No matter what happens to you, you're coming back and you've been here before, right? And you're okay. Are we okay? Yeah, we have our stuff and the world has stuff, but we're okay. This man gave my God, that I always believed in, I just couldn't take root anywhere very successfully. He gave my God a face. Because in 1922, we just read diary entries. This whole thing started 88 years ago. Not 8,000 years ago, not 2,000 years ago, not 5,000 years ago, when he retired and realized that he wanted to perfect himself. He was a very rich diamond merchant. He dealt with the rich and famous. He was very successful. He was a devout Hindu. He had 12 gurus. And he felt something was missing. And all of a sudden, we heard today, we celebrated this morning, journal entries that he wrote talking about how the body is dangerous, it'll bring you sorrow, relationships are tricky. But the soul, he actually separated the body from the soul and knew that the soul was the truth and that his God spoke the truth and that they were related. Now, the diary entries that someone read for us this morning, just a couple, showed us how deeply and intensely he loved God, but how deeply and intensely he was determined to perfect himself and be the best human being that his soul could be in this body that he had, this old body, this old retired body. Okay. It takes him over 10 years to realize, and I don't know if you know this. We're all here today because he realized that someone was talking in his head and it wasn't him. And from 1922 to the 1930s, 10 to 15 years later, he did not realize that. But he was getting ideas about how to perfect himself and how to be a better human being. The minute he realized what was happening, he surrendered everything, including his money. He surrendered the importance of family relationships because he realized that the one true relationship he had was with God. So I've been asked to share with you in a couple of minutes why he's so important to me. This man gave my God a face. Here he is. And you know what? He's backstage this week. This, this artificial simulation, this photograph, his eyes follow you. And we have a little back there that's Baba's room, where I can go and just sit and talk to him. And I was taught up at Peace Village 17 years ago, before I became a student eight years ago, that this man had God speaking through him and that God, whom we call Shiva, was perfect, of course, and that we could trust him and that he was pure love and that he was the perfect father and mother. He gave birth to us through what we call, you know, knowledge. So we're mouth-born. If you study here, you're mouth-born. So he's mother and father, but the most loving, perfect. If you can close your eyes and imagine a perfect parent, I may have had one a lot of lifetimes ago. I don't know, but I certainly haven't in anything I remember. And I wasn't a perfect parent. But we're talking about perfection. You're talking about God's work. And you're talking about a man who just was committed to taking this world, which is kind of going downhill morally in this lifetime, ethically, false truths and all this stuff. And he gave me the tools. The timing is wonderful for me. He gave me the tools to really not look so much at the drama going on, except to learn from it. How can I elevate out of the drama? We've talked about that a lot here. But he gave me the tools to believe that this world is going to not determine every minute of my life that I have to be as sad as the world seems to be. If I choose to focus on what's wrong, I'm going to be depressed. I'm going to be filled with sorrow. But if my husband comes home depressed about work and I have a light, an inner light shining in me, then I share that, sometimes silently. I've not only healed myself in that moment, but I've healed him too. But children, children get upset. You yell at them, "Well, I shouldn't have done that." He had a way of correcting people without judgment and criticism. He was insure. Perfect by the time he left us today, January 18th, 1969. So the face that I talk to every morning, the face I talk to in my meditation room, the face I talk to in here, the more, it's God for me, you know? Anything else was never a God I felt personally. It was, I grew up with a punishing God. Maybe some of you do too. I grew up with a God that had rules, a lot of rules. There's a fairness to the universe that I've learned here that he modeled. There's a tenderness and a warmth. He had 12 gurus. God is the supreme guru, the supreme teacher. And he takes a backseat and says, "I'm only the car. I'm not the driver." That's the real God. "I'm the face so he can speak. I'm the mouth so he can speak." And you're going to learn a lot more from a very short video we're going to show you now, I think it's about 10, 15 minutes long, about his life and what he started. So having a face was not enough. What I came to learn when I took the course here and from every day that I'm here is the beauty, the absolute beauty of his courage and his determination to turn this world around. He started with eight little girls, eight women. They were older teenagers. And by the time he died, I think they were not up to more than a couple of hundred. But now it's worldwide. People are attracted. And you know what? Either you remember or you have memory in that soul of yours or you don't. I must have, because when Sister Dorothy told me, "I'm a soul, not just a body," I started to feel that. I started to cry. It wasn't something intellectual. She tapped into something I remember. If you're sitting here tonight and you come every week, then I think you must know a little bit of what I'm trying to say, right? There's an inner peace that we can create no matter what's going on outside those doors. But this man is the perfect lover, the perfect friend. And it's funny because, and I'll end with this, my morning communication with him is very often teary-eyed. Or I'll write in my journal and I feel when he comes on the page and gives me the answer I've been looking for. Of course, it comes in a thought, just the way Brahma Baba had thoughts that he realized were not his over a decade ago. So that's enough out of me. Anybody have any questions? Well, if you do and you think of anything, hi Zoomers, I forgot to say hello to you tonight. We have the chat. We can talk later, but we have two really wonderful people whom you know very well. If anyone here for the first time, you know? Okay. First, I'm going to introduce you to the video. And then after the video, we will have Brother Eric, who is up in the control room. Come on down and talk to you about Brahma Baba, followed by Sister Anjani, who in her spare time is also the electrician. Okay, so without further ado, you got that video queued up for us? Okay, here we go. Enjoy the evening. Take care.
Through the windows of the soul comes an experience. Behind the eyes, within the soul, is an accumulation of shakti, power, that each of us has stored to different degrees. Drishti is this spiritual vision that emanates from the soul through the eyes, through the face to another soul. It is what draws us to someone. How is it that some souls have a greater magnetic pull? An enchanting power of attraction. Brahma Baba, through just his being what he had become, one could always feel the spiritual fragrance in the atmosphere. As I came closer to him, observing him, I too experienced my own unique spirituality. I watched him mesmerized by his manner. And I was enveloped into a spiritual vacuum, awakening my own realms of divinity, enjoying a very tender part of myself. Seeing his royalty in movement moved me into a place of tasting my own royalty that had been tucked away so neatly and forgotten. I was so captivated with his delicate, subtle way he expressed himself through matter as he took me into my own sublime feelings of my own forgotten nature. So ordinary he was and yet so extraordinary. In the beginning, there was such a small group of souls before him and yet his vision extended beyond that group, beyond his part of the world. He had deep faith that the world would change. As we saw his own transformation, it became clearer to us that we too could change. There was a time when the cupboards were bare. Those serving were directed to serve everyone dal and roti, that is soup and bread, just once. Three old mothers came back for seconds of the dal. Brahma took his plate of dal and told someone to divide it amongst the mothers. He said, "The mothers didn't have teeth to chew." We watched Brahma Baba. As he sat so silently eating his roti, he showed us how to live in humility with love, compassion. He taught us how to eat, holding the remembrance of God in our souls. We too learned to perform actions whilst remembering God, side by side with Brahma. He was such a tower of light. He spoke out in the name of truth. There was a time when the priests had become a symbol of distorted values, empty pompous rituals with an emphasis on rituals rather than moral and spiritual development, indulging in mindless actions, mindless rituals under the umbrella of religion. Taking heaps of edibles, hundreds and thousands of bags of wheat, tins of butter and milk to feed the so-called sacred flames while millions lived in semi-starved and semi-naked conditions. Brahma Baba spoke out against these senseless rituals, professing that health and wealth can be gotten from the practice of meditation, awakening that divine silent light within and ridding oneself of the vices. He believed that every soul had a memory of God as the father of the soul and the self as the child. He taught us how to activate this memory, how to experience that oneness with God. In his everyday routine of life, he was able to bring remembrance of God in every action. remembrance, study. I so loved watching Brahma Baba study. It seemed to make me want to do the same. He never tired of the study. Wherever I looked, he was studying. Remembering God. His efforts seemed endless and yet easy. Anyone that came close could feel his divinity as it permeated the atmosphere. And we just loved being in his company. When Brahma Baba spoke, we listened. Not with the ears, but with the soul. From deep within the soul, we listened. Swallowing every word, listening with the heart of the soul. A legacy of a man dedicated to God, dedicated to world transformation, dedicated to humanity. They say his memorial is this, a marble structure created from love. But I say his memorial is this. Those that were inspired and are inspired by his example and have dedicated their lives to transform the world through self-transformation by connecting with the father of the soul.
So before I, Brother Eric, I mentioned courage before. What the video doesn't talk about is how difficult it was for this man to single-handedly go against the patriarchal society. And when the father's daughters said, "I met a man who has magic in his eyes and electricity, a feeling. I have to do this." And they said, "No." And there was punishment, brutality. The culture would not accept him. And now I'm happy to say, cutting right to the end, that we are worldwide. We are in 170 countries? 130 countries? We will be 170. Are there 170? And all the courage that I've learned here and the values that have turned me into a much more loving, patient person really stem from what he learned to teach. And I'm lucky enough to share this room and downstairs on a Sunday morning breakfast, people who actually knew him. And we have all these diaries and videos. It's real, it's here. And so I'm happy to share that with you tonight. And now I'll give you the seniors. Brother Eric, you're going to speak with us now? Are you here? Betty's coming down the steps, right? Enjoy the evening.
Evening. Welcome to Global Harmony House on the 18th of January. It is not a festival and it's not a holiday, but it's more of a commemoration. So very happy that you were able to make it here. It's a special evening. It was a special day for us. So we spent some time thinking about what it is that we have achieved and what has been presented to us. So I'd like to share a little of my personal understandings today. We arranged the stage to kind of bring in the same qualities as that memorial in Montabur, in India, Rajasthan. That's where a lot of the strip plays that you saw. That's where a lot of the strip plays that you saw, and that's where Brahma Baba, his remains are. And if you see on the walls, it's got purity, might, knowledge, and peace. There was an obelisk, kind of a center column with those four qualities. And those words were on the column in the center because those were some of his main qualities. So we put those on the, on our columns, just to kind of have that sense of bringing those feelings into it. And so those are some of the qualities that we practice and meditate on and kind of revere. Because Brahma Baba, I hope this makes some sense, is a little like us, or was a little like us. Lived his life, had family, had work, a variety of things. But as it was brought out in the video, he also studied spiritual knowledge. And that's what Harmony House is about. That's what my life has been about for many years. To try to understand and apply those so that there's benefits in the moment, the life, the relationships, and the great beyond, whatever that turns out to be. I grew up not in the Hindu faith. I grew up in a very exotic place called Iowa. And if you're political at all, you probably know that they had caucuses on them. Whatever happens there, but that was not, we didn't have the same background or tradition. Brahma Baba Hindu, whatever it was, and you've heard a lot of his story. I grew up in a Christian tradition. And there was an individual in that tradition that I believe all of you are familiar with, and his name was Jesus. And I'm not sure what was taught. I always say that, but what I took from my upbringing and my teachings was here was a role model, a individual on how we could be. Jesus. That's how I understood it, that this is what is possible in my life. And always had that idea that, you know, if we worked, if we tried things, we could become like that also. And what was interesting for me in this transition, when I understood my spiritual identity and started to put that into practice, that there was a similarity. That Brahma Baba was an instrument or an individual who studied and practiced and connected to become like that. And so he wasn't a religious founder, but he was an individual who listened and applied and practiced and became perfect. He wasn't born that way. But he became that way because he kind of let go of some of the things that interfere with us. Vices, negativity, such like that. And some of you might be familiar with those. And so in that sense, it's understanding that I could do that also. And you heard, I believe, that you can have a number of relationships. We had the video meditation on the guide. And that was chosen specifically because Brahma Baba is a guide for me. He's a friendly guy. So he's a friend and a guide, someone who I feel I can connect to and watch and observe and learn and emulate. Follow, practice, same types of things. And so some of the traditions that I grew up with kind of carry over into what I continue to do. So I don't see much of a difference. Be nice, be courteous, respect, take care of myself, all those qualities were the model of perfection and was shown as possible. And I think that's one of the things that I truly enjoy about my spiritual practice is that I believe it's possible. It is not something far away. It is not, it's it is not something that is only for one or a few, but it is for everybody who would want it. Who would want to experience their true self? In order to do that, we have to kind of let go of some of our anger, some of our hatred, some of our biases, some of our limitations, some of our attachments. We have a lot of some-ups. We got to get rid of some of those some-ups. And when we have that awareness that it's possible and that here is an example of someone, and that's why it's so important. It wasn't someone who descended and said, "I'm great," or "I'm perfect," or "I'm this, that." It's someone who said, "Hey, you know, I've been doing things in a way that haven't been beneficial, but I'm going to change. And these are the steps I'm going to take. I'm a guide. I am someone who you can follow also." It is not a blind faith following for me, but it's something that if this works for you, why can't I try it and work for me also? So implementing and understanding what Brahma Baba did in his life is very much a sense that that's something I could do also. I can start to understand how my mind works. I can understand some of the feelings and experiences that I have. And I can start to make choices to move towards that sense of my original, true, eternal self. And so I truly appreciate what Brahma Baba has done for me in my life. And I'm hoping that some of the things that we do here are inspirational for you also to recognize that, yeah, you know, Brahma Baba could do it, Eric could do it, Eric could do it, I could do it. That's how I learned to drive, a little side note. Like, "Oh, big car, I don't fucking do it." These guys could do it. I certainly could do it. You know, they're a bunch of idiots driving around the road. I can do that. So it's not a big deal to say, "Yes, I'm going to take another step towards my inner peace, happiness, harmony, and end up maybe with some of the qualities that Brahma Baba had." That we might have that original sense of who we are, purity. That we might have power to do things because not everybody's going to cooperate with you in the world. We might have knowledge, we study, "Who am I? Where am I from? What are going on?" And our true nature, peace. And just on a side note, I always appreciate when you come here because this is a house, it's a place where we want to practice that, think about it, and support each other so that when we come in here, that's the feeling that, yeah, I remember what my true self is like. So today was very special for us and I hope that you take away something, at least a little bit of inspiration to continue finding peace, recognizing that there are those that have shown us what we can do and that you might want to have some of that for yourself also. And someone who has taken a lot of that for themselves, I'd like to introduce right now. Now it consists her, Angelina. She's going to come and share a little of her experience, maybe guide us in peaceful meditation. I thought she was going to come this way, but she just kind of disappeared. So we have minor miracles here. Really, almost like magic because she has gone that way, but I believe that she will reappear, just like magic. Here she is. So Sister Angelina, please join. Please join us, share with us things.
Om Shanti. And a good evening. How many of you have heard stories of Brahma Baba before, who's here for the first time? You know, like. And Sister, you also. You've been here before? Yes. Very good. Brahma Babas, you've been hearing for the past 45, 40 minutes. How great and how wonderful was this personality? And I may say was, but is, is. Because the soul being eternal, being immortal, being forever, we always, we still feel that his presence is still around us in a very, very profound way. So we may see that we have an image here of him. We're now worshiping him. What are we doing? Is remembering how he lived his life. How his life inspired me. You know, I was born being a Hindu. And I remember when my cousin used to tell me about this meditation, I said, "I was born a Hindu. Just leave me to die being a Hindu. I don't plan to change my life and follow any other paths." And about a year or two, and she came regularly to visit. But then about probably a year or two later, she was, this time when she was visiting, she asked me, "Are you going to wake up for early morning meditation?" And our timing of waking up is 3:30, 3:45, 4 o'clock. And I said, "That's the time I sleep. I don't wake up at that time." But it was interesting. I was aware when she got up and what was more interesting was that the next morning, when she was out of the bed, I was there also. And I went and I sat there for my morning meditation. And I had the most profound experience of peace. It was a peace that I've never felt before. It was a peace that transformed my life instantly. Because, and why I'm saying instantly, because what I noticed that was happening throughout the day, there was a very deep silence inside. And whatever I was doing was coming from that place of silence. I didn't understand what it was, what was happening. I didn't, couldn't put words to it because I just don't have the knowledge. But the experience was profound. Then she said, "Would you like to go to the meditation center with me?" And I'm saying yes to something that I don't know where I'm going, but I said yes. And I went to the center and I went to our meditation room. She left. And what I felt as I was sitting there, here is this picture of this person. I felt this person alive. It was bizarre at that moment, I will tell you, that I moved away. I said, "How could a person who is not here anymore?" And remember, I had no knowledge. I said, "How could a person who is not here anymore?" It's as though his eyes are calling me. I left and I went away. And I never, I didn't tell the story about my experience of that until much later. But then while being there, the whole vibration and those who are there, I was witnessing a lifestyle that I've never witnessed before. We're a very happy family life. Huge family and everyone is happy and there is a lot of love and caring and sharing. But there was something that was missing that I was feeling when I went to the center that was not in my family. And that was the spiritual experience was that one is love and the other is called spiritual love. One is called peace and the other is called spiritual peace. One is called happiness and the other is spiritual happiness. So it was a very big difference between the two because in my family life, everything is physical. It's what you eat and what you wear and who you are with and the places you go to and all those things. That's what was life. And yes, we are happy with that. But there is something inside that is missing, but you don't really, you know, know what is missing. I don't know if I'm making sense. You really don't know. You can't say this is what it is. And so what happened when I went to the center? The environment and the people and the meditation and the study and it was like completely different. And I realized that this is what the soul was looking for. This is what I wanted. And so it did not take me long to make that transition from putting up a fight about my religion and starting a journey which is taking me inwards. It's not taking me outwards. It's not taking me to another religion and another group of people or any of those things. But it's taking me inwards to my own self. And that discovery of the truth was another profound moment. So all of this is, I started to look at the life of Brahma Baba even in those few days that I stayed at the center. I read, we have a book that is called Adi Dave. And Adi Dave is the life story of the organization, Vada Brahma Baba. What happened? Luis was telling you all some stories of how he came and what happened and, you know, the people, his own family and relatives went against him because it was all new for them. Was it not new for Brahma Baba? It was all very new for him. He did not understood in the beginning what was happening. But he knew something different was taking place. And then the knowledge start revealing through him. He's listening to the knowledge. Can you imagine you're hearing these words? And you know you're not the one speaking these words. Who spoke those words? He left his hometown and he went to another part of India called Benaras. And that's where the gurus, the famous gurus of India, that's where they live and they study. This scholarly gurus. And he asked them, "I'm having all these visions. Are you giving me these visions?" And what the guru said, they don't know. They did not. So what happened with him? He withdrew from his gurus. Because if the gurus don't know and they can't explain what's happening to him, he has to go to discover, to find out what's happening. So he lost his faith in human beings as gurus. So he went into deeper contemplation and this is where Luis was sharing some of the stories of how he used to journal. So he did a lot of journaling. He did a lot of journaling with his mind and intellect to understand his mind, how he's, it's thinking, how the intellect is discerning and what's happening, what's making him to do certain things. So he used to journal all about that. And he used to say, "The mind intellect and the personality," or we say sanskar, "these are my ministers. I am the king and I'm seated here at the center of my forehead and I have to rule this kingdom." But this mind intellect and sanskars, they are ruling me. My senses, they are the ones who are like the maids and servants and he's seeing how they are also ruling him. And he realized that he became the slave. He realized that he, at that moment, that he doesn't know who he is. So as he went deeper into his thinking, into that space of the soul, the soul got that realization that he's a soul. This is body. And all our souls who lives in their bodies. So he used to write on the walls, his wife's name was Jasoda. Jasoda is a soul, or this one is a soul, and his children, they are all souls. So he used to keep Jasoda is a soul, or this one is a soul and his children, they are all souls. So he used to keep writing it. And I remembered when I came and I learned that he used to write it, I started writing and filling up my notebooks with, I am a soul and everyone is a soul. Because I wanted to make this consciousness of the soul very, very deep into my life. I would look at everyone and all I would see, all our souls. That helped me to accept everyone as they are. That helped me, it didn't matter which religion, which caste, which skin color, nothing mattered. When I had my differences before and look at this consciousness, just a switch of consciousness from the body to the soul, create a whole new world of awakening inside. A whole beautiful experience that you're able to see everyone in the most beautiful way. They are my family. They are the family of God. So this relationship with myself and Brahma Baba started becoming closer. It's as though I started coming to know my father. But Brahma Baba's greatness, Brahma Baba's love for humanity, love for those who were around him, his love to serve, his love for himself to become, would never have happened without God. Without God. And so when he started receiving visions, one of them was the creation, the destruction of this old world. He was seeing all that's happening today. In the nineteen thirties, he was seeing all the scenes as it's happening today. But he also saw the construction establishment of a new world. And then he's hearing this voice saying, you now have to create such a world. You have to now go to that world. You have to do this. So it was new for him. He had to understand all of that. So he took that time by doing his journaling, contemplation, until that clear realization was there. And then what's the experience for us? Is that supreme light, supreme soul? He's using that body to speak. He's using his mouth to speak. And that's how from there, one would stay at home and get their, get a vision. They will go into trance as soon as they come to his home. Until they start thinking it's like magic. All kinds of things were happening, which also he couldn't explain, that when they will ask him, he will say, go and ask God. But one of the most profound thing about this organization that I really enjoy the most, that we don't do anything blindly. We don't follow anything blindly. Whatever we do here is based on knowledge, based on an understanding. And so you will hear, many times we will hear in our study, Brahma Baba will say, while I'm doing this, I'm eating, I forget to remember God. So he never called himself God. He never said anyone should look at him as God. He never told anyone, you have to come and bow at my feet. I am God. No, actually what he did, he stopped everyone from bowing at anyone's feet. In the sense that he says, it's not that he stopped them by saying, don't. But what he explained was that no one is worthy to be worshipped. If you're not worthy to be worshipped, then why am I going to allow someone to come and bow at me? Bow at my feet. So Brahma Baba's life was very, very rich, very full. That it started with, I always say this organization started with one man's worship, Brahma Baba. And as Luis says, we're in about a hundred and thirty countries with probably about two million people. And why is it that we can't be millions and billions? Why is it that we can't be millions and billions? Because it's a journey where you decide for yourself what do I want in my soul? Am I looking for that peace, for that love, for that happiness, for that wisdom? That truth? I'm looking to God, not to him. God would have used his mouth to speak, but he had to follow the directions to make his life. God didn't make his life. He made his life by remembering God, by studying with God. So he became the child. He became the student and he became the one who followed the directions of God. Now, everyone here probably belonged to some religion, right? Some religion, some religious path or a spiritual path. What do we do in our lives? What do we do with our lives? Do we just open our scriptures and read it? Or do we take something from it and say, let me make this personal. This is my life. Let me do something different. Let me think differently. Or do I just read it because I'm supposed to read it? And I did that as a child and put the book away, put the scripture away? No. Take a step deeper and go within yourself and ask yourself, what is truth? What am I looking for in my life? Do I know what that truth is? Have I found that truth? If I really find what is truth, our seeking stops. Our seeking stopped completely. I don't need to look anywhere because where is truth? Where is truth? Is it in the books? Is it what I heard somebody said? The truth is in each one of us. Love is in each one of us. Peace is in each one of us. Happiness is in each one of us. As is God, so are we. We are not God, but we are God's children. And as God's children, we can see how our qualities, it's either matching or is in conflict with God's qualities. So where do I want to position myself? In conflict with God? Or to be close to him? I want to be close to him. I want to know God as though when I talk about him, I talk about him as my father, my parents, my friend, the one who takes care of me, the one who loves me as no one else can love me. The one whom I know is going to be there for me, whether I need him or I don't need him. I have that faith because of the experiences that the soul received from the relationship with God and the relationship with Brahma Baba. Brahma Baba was so close to God. And sometimes we might think that being close to God means, you know what? Everything will be so perfect in our lives. So perfect, seamless. Not at all. It's as though we have opened the Pandora box when we belong to God. You know why? Because we now come face to face with the things that gives us peacelessness. That which creates difficulties. That which creates unhappiness. That which makes me create certain habits which disturb my life. And so we come face to face with that. And that's when I start moving deeper and deeper into that place of truth. So we have a choice. We have a choice to move to that place of truth or stay in a place where I experience life to be always of sorrow, of conflict, of pain, or of disagreement, or of something. And so I would say to everyone tonight as a family who have come here, pause for moments and ask yourself really this question, who am I? Whom do I want to be very close to? Just imagine, no one is there in your life. There are cer- certain people, certain times in their lives, no one is there for them. One who has faith, God will be there for you. So let me choose in this moment, what is it that's going to be very meaningful for my life and on my this journey? Whatever is the journey, live life with peace, love, happiness. Look at our world. I'm gonna ask the world to give to me. Would the world give to me what I want? Is there anyone out there to give to me what I want? Not really. And so who's going to give to me? First, I give to myself by remembering God as the supreme soul, the supreme source, the one whom Brahma Baba remembered and took from him, took from that being to become the one whom we look at as an angel. The one who, you know, his life was full. It's like every step is a step of revelation for us. It's a step that is very meaningful for us. I will close on this, but I like one story. One of his daughter used to tell the story when they were children. Brahma Baba never got angry in his life. Never got angry. So when they were little children, she and her brother, they were playing and their, the father was, he was a jeweler, diamond jeweler. So they went to his shop and they were, they took the diamonds. Some fell on the ground and some they took with them. So when the father, when Brahma Baba went to the store the next day, he saw diamonds were on the ground and some were missing. So then he asked the children. He said, um, no, he didn't ask them for the diamonds. He, he showed the daughter one brooch, a pin. And he said to her, I want to make one like this for you, but I need a few more diamonds. And of course she wanted that, that pin. And so what did she do? She met them, brought the diamonds back. So he used a method that will attract her to bring that instead of scolding her, instead of making her feel bad for what she has done. And I thought that was such a beautiful way of helping a child to understand. And of course she gave back the diamond and then she laughs when she tells these stories. And there are so many other stories because she loved to give. So she had a golden bangle and she just gave the bangle away to one person who came to the house asking for money to get her daughter married. She took the bangle out and gave it. The woman went to this shop to give Baba the bangle. And of course, Brahma Baba will not take the bangle. So when Brahma Baba asked her, okay, here's your bangle. She said, you told me, you taught me how to give, so I gave it so that I can become a queen. So he, she, he used to teach them all these beautiful qualities. But she wouldn't understand that my bangle is expensive, right? She, what she understood, give. Give and I will become, I will receive. So there is lots and lots and lots to tell of his life. But we're gonna close now with a few minutes of meditation. And meditation is very simple. It's our thoughts. What am I doing with my mind? What am I doing with the thoughts which I create? What kind of thoughts do I create? Do I choose them or do they just appear? When we learn meditation, we're actually learning to choose our thoughts rather than they just appear in my mind. And so we're gonna sit back, you're going to, you can follow us. I share the thoughts. You can quietly follow with your own mind. I ask myself this question. I can see this body that is made up of flesh and bones. His eyes. He's speaking. Can this body speak without the presence of the soul? I recognize that I am the living energy. The energy that speaks. And this is. As I think I am peaceful, I can feel the waves of peace. I think of love. And there is that beautiful feeling of acceptance of ever so. Recognizing these qualities within the self. Recognising these qualities within the self. It becomes easy to think of God as the supreme soul, as supreme source of ocean, of love. The one without conditional love. The one who entered the body of this ordinary being. And expressed all his qualities through that soul. Relationship between Brahma Baba and God as the supreme. In a state of purity and peace. And as I think of these souls, I can feel the waves of the ocean. The waves of love. I absorb these qualities. We use the great names Om Shanti. Om means I am. And Shanti means peace, just be peaceful. So go home with this thought. Tell yourself again and again, "I am peaceful. I am a peaceful soul." Anything comes up in front of you, tell yourself, just remind yourself with this thought, "I am a peaceful soul." "Who's child am I?" The supreme soul, who's the ocean of peace and the ocean of love. And I want you to see the magic of your own thoughts. Just these simple thoughts. It's life changing. Because you are the one who's creating the thoughts of peace and the thoughts of love. Om Shanti.
Shanti. Brother Eric and Sister Anjanine, that was so beautiful. Thank you so much. You're good? Come back next week, we have Brother Eric doing the hour and on the topic of a life of limitless love. Come back Zoomers and the course. If anyone is interested, if they just give their name. If anyone is interested in the beginners course that is going on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday nights, just give your name at the desk as you leave. Okay, I'll get some blessings and.
I, it's in the front. I thought I would like to share a rose with everyone who escaped tonight. Would you like to have a rose? Those who would like to have a rose, you can come and have a rose. And just remember, this rose was offered to God. So it's very special. And so just feel that it's a rose God is giving to you. Okay?